To call this meeting of South Burlington School Board to order, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We will start with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to amendments to the agenda.
So we have one amendment that we need to add under the consent agenda. We need to add a new hire of Catherine Wood, a 1.0 FTE, fourth grade teacher at Orchard, which was one of the contingent teachers that was added as a result of enrollment.
Any other amendments?
No other amendments, other than the fact that we did not do B in executive session. We did not do B.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, announcements, and welcome our student rep Alex Back from her travels. I don't know if she has announcements, or you do, David?
No, I don't think we did announcements, just because we've been, you've been all very busy, and that might come in along throughout the rest of the report.
Alex, would you mind sharing briefly where you've been, because you've had some interesting experiences?
Well, during summer vacation, I went to visit my family in both Spain and Germany. And then, once the school year started, I actually went on an exchange trip to Australia. I'm in the Big Picture Program at South Burlington High School, and the Big Picture Program is international, and they do have a schools, a couple of schools in Australia as well. So I went there and did some, you know, exchange of knowledge and helping out the Australian Big Picture School System and, you know, learning from them and taking that back to try to improve or add to the system or like the program at South Burlington High School. So that's been an amazing learning experience.
Good, happy to have you back.
Yeah, glad to be back, thank you.
And I know, just while we're on the topic, I think we, I think Mr. Burke has posted or has, looking for a junior candidate for the school board, so, representation. So that is a process we'd like to ask you to follow up on as well.
Sure.
Good, thanks. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, City-School Collaboration.
We have not had another meeting since we last met. We had a steering committee meeting last time. So I don't, I don't have anything really to report specifically from our meeting, again, for people who don't know, but Kevin Dorn, Helen, really Elizabeth and myself get together. We do it generally about once a month, sometimes twice. And just to talk about city-school things, our last conversation was certainly specific about budget. Just again, to recap a little bit, budget development, budget process. And we'll continue that, that work, I expect, moving forward.
Do you want to give an update on the library move?
Sure. So again, that was also part of that, that previous conversation. But currently, the city library that is currently within the high school library will be moving out of the high school library and be moving, will be moving into the university mall location, somewhere, I think, in the Bon Ton area, what was Bon Tons. And that move is happening somewhere around the middle of November. I don't know exactly that date. I think it's somewhere around the 12, 13, 14, and it will be happening, so it won't be disruptive to students. It will be happening either in the evening or on the weekend. And we're working currently to identify circulations and things that need to, need to be moved and what will then move around.
Any other comments? All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So I have three, I have three items. One is budget planning, another one is citizen budget advisory, and then smarter balance. We've got handouts for each of these for the board members. I'll kind of go just through that quickly. I know we've had some conversation. I'll try to be brief. This is again, and thanks to John Obbin for populating this. We recognize it's a probably fairly aggressive calendar. That said, we have also, the CBAC is what we call the Citizen Budget Advisory Committee. We currently have a scheduled date, first date with them. Actually, we had that scheduled for yesterday, but we were obviously tied up in negotiations, and that did not happen. So the next date will be Novem, October 17th. But scattered throughout here is obviously looking for some information around budget guidelines, et cetera, and trying to make sure that we, we bring back to the community, back to the board to advise how we move forward. So I, I think it would be important to just maybe provide us with some feedback, either, and I don't necessarily mean now, but around what are some gaps or opportunities that you might see that we could do more of? And that would, that would be helpful. So, so, so that, that's kind of the schedule. We did identify in, at this meeting to get some general parameters. I identified that. I don't really think that necessarily the board is ready for that. General parameters, meaning, you know, what are your specific recommendations back to me and the administration around overall budget increase? Based on enrollment projections and FTEs? And I'm not asking for, you know, what you want, but giving you some general guidelines, as well as right down to tax rate. That said, we do have a lot of information that's currently, some is coming in. Some of you were provided information yesterday from Rebecca Hockum on current conditions around budget. We've also have a multitude of other things that I think are going to be coming in. And John, I've talked to John about at least developing and populating what we have called in the past our budget worksheet with kind of expected enrollment. And again, we won't get equalized pupil data until generally, yeah, late, yeah, that, that kind of that December. We, it's, it has to come by the 15th, I think, of December. But we'll, we'll make some assumptions so that we can begin to move, as well as our tuition students, and then looking at some of the critical needs that we have in order to move the district forward. So, but, I mean, I would be remiss not to just now give a pause to you folks. There may be opportunity to give a little bit of pre-direction that can help us in our continued framing of this work.
Bridget.
Yeah, one question I had, and I just don't know how much work with this is. December 20th feels, feels pretty late to, to be seeing just the first draft of a budget. I know we'll see the, the stewardship earlier than that. But as you were mentioning, David, a lot of things feel like they've moved around even since, you know, the start of the school year. So we know we have a little bit more revenue coming in from tuition students. We know a few different things that have changed. FTEs that we've had to add that we didn't expect. And now, the, the settling with the support staff and with the teachers and things. And I was just wondering if it's possible, there's a, there's such a process, such a good process that you run with the staff in terms of new initiatives. I was wondering if simultaneously it would be possible to have some kind of budget that, or draft that sort of says, if we were just jumping off from here, you know, and continuing what we've, Steve was calling it a services budget last year. But it's a little bit slightly different in that it would sort of add in things that we know we have to add, or take away things that we knew we were planning to take away. So it's almost like a, a pre-preliminary budget, just so we start to get a feel for where that number's coming in. Because it's kind of hard to give guidance on, you know, what we think we have to spend on new initiatives until we have some kind of sense of where we are. And I don't know if it's possible to run this simultaneously, or whether we really do need to wait till December 20. I just feel that often that December 20 to, you know, mid-January feels very compressed, and it feels like there's very little time to discuss anything. But that, that's just sort of my initial feedback looking at this.
That's good feedback, and we'll, we'll, we'll work on moving that around. Thanks, Bridget.
One of the pieces of that is, is, as I think you already mentioned, is specifically this actual FTEs to budgeted FTEs, and where we are in the hiring process, and what we think we're actually going to end up hiring this year, or not, you know. So that specifically, not about FTEs. And then, again, another update at some point soon on enrollment and where we are. Yeah, and then, as I said, this, it would be nice to have even just a simple, even directional, if we don't know exactly what the numbers are yet. You know, here are the things that are going to increase the budget next year. Here are the things that are probably going to help us decrease in some areas next year. Just so we start to get a sense of that as it's being formulated.
Great. Got it, thanks.
Any other comments from the board at this point?
Just a question, Bridget, for you. If, if December 20th is too late, would, would you suggest adding a third meeting in December? That would bump it, you know, move, or move it back a week?
I, I, yeah, I don't know that I necessarily feel like I need another meeting in December for that. I would just like to have a little bit more. It's just, I found last year, when, when they came to me, especially as a new, a new board member last year, kind of going through it the first time, and they kind of came to me and said, well, give us some direction on the budget. And I was kind of like, wow, it's just this amorphous, you know, you know, where do I start to dig in a little bit? And for me, it would be helpful to just start from where we are. And then that, in my mind, helps us sort of understand, you know, how much, you know, what the range is of possibility in terms of new items that we're seeing. And, and just in the back of my mind as well, you know, for example, stewardship. In, I haven't looked at the stewardship budget, you know, in a couple of months, frankly, because we've been focused on the things. But in my mind, there was, there was a decent bump this year, because there were some big projects that had been sort of either rescheduled from last year, not big ones from last year, but there was a big one, I think, around the cafeteria that was, was meant for this year. And, and some of those things, especially if we start to talk about needing more than just the operational budget, but potentially bonding or those kinds of things, those discussions take a little bit longer than just sort of diving right in and, and checking things off. So I don't necessarily know that I need another deadline or another number. It would just be good somewhere in here to schedule, you know, sort of a preliminary discussion of where we are before we just sort of see a fully thought-out preliminary budget on December 20th. So I don't know what's possible, and that's why I'm not quite pushing about hard deadlines for those kinds of things, but whatever's possible, given the workload that we have on our front.
Yeah, I think that, that's helpful, and I'll, I'll work with John. But I'm, I'm thinking, given what you said, you know, somewhere in that November 13, 15, and six could get, you know, we could add, you know, we're going to provide stewardship. Maybe we also provide a kind of a, I'm going to overuse the word services, preliminary budget or something like that.
Or run rate budget, or, you know.
Yeah, with what we know.
Sort of adjusted, you know.
The problem with that, as you know, is we often don't have equalized, and we don't have some of that other data. But it, you know, we generally are starting to, you know, hear about where it might be. But I think that, that's, that's a good, that's good feedback. So the citizens budget advisory, as I said, we have a meeting set for the 17th of October. We'll be, you know, again, we've gotten better in the past. What's the purpose, objective? You know, when we first started this, we were less clear about the purpose, objective. And actually, quite frankly, I was not clear about the number of meetings. I'm pretty good at that, actually, expectations of the workload. But, so that's the first meeting that we'll go over, and we'll also try to do some educating around some of those big buckets of, you know, enrollments, capitals, those types of things, and start to dial people into that. The budget worksheet, it's, you can't assume that everybody knows exactly. We currently have quite a few individuals that are wanting to return. I think this is also an opportunity, right now, if there are people that are listening to us that want to join into that, then we would welcome, we would welcome some additional folks. We do think it's pretty important that once you start, if we go along three meetings, and we've done a lot of educating, it's really hard to come into, you know, the fourth meeting. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't welcome you, but it's hard to be in, in the, kind of the uptick of information. So we would ask that anybody out there would like to come and join our group. October 17th is our first meeting. If you're able to, you can come. I'd appreciate an email to John Obbin or myself that you would like to come and join. So again, that invitation is open. And we really do appreciate the, the very objective views that we get from, from our advisory group. They bring a wealth of information from kind of the business sector, commercial, you know. I, I think, a really, really broad brush that's been helpful in the past. And again, I say helpful, because it's been helpful to the board, based on some of their feedback that's been provided. So that's that one. And the last bullet point is regarding the Smarter Balance assessment that we did get back, and that is in your book, it's available. And I'm going to ask Stuart to just kind of give you a quick overview of some of the, the big, the big items or the bulleted items. And this won't be the last time you'll have the opportunity to talk about assessment, but Smarter Balance has just been released, actually was released earlier in the month, actually. And we're disaggreging, disaggregating the data has not been as easy in the pa, as in the past, but it's before you. So Stuart.
So just very quickly, the Smarter Balance is a test that was designed to test students being taught in the Common Core, and it's used by a variety of states. Vermont is only one of the states, though under the new Educational, Every Student Succeeds Act, there was more choice, but Vermont has decided in their plan to stay with S-Back. This is the third year that this assessment was given. It's a computer-driven assessment, so students do the work totally online. One other key component to, to know is that this test has been for third through eighth graders, grade 11, starting this calendar year. It'll be third through eighth grade and ninth graders. 11th graders will no longer take the S-Back. So the data for ninth grade next year will be new data and can be compared to the score from the year before, but not to previous high school scores. That's a change, but that was part of the plan. And the other thing you should know is this is not exactly the same test that students took the other two years. In the last two years, there was what was called the performance task. And what that was, was a scripted half-hour lesson in both English and math. And so a teacher taught a lesson, and right after or within 24 hours, students answered questions related to that lesson. This year, that was another reading task on the test. So the state results have gone down some, our results have gone down a little. And some of that could be attributed to the fact that instead of listening to somebody and then responding in a particular way, it was reading. And I know for the language arts one, it was a very long reading, and we saw a lot of fatigue. That did happen in the past. So I can't say any more than that, because anything after that is a supposition. So the charts that you see in front of you very quickly, the first chart is comparisons to other schools by grade. And so if you look at just Orchard, there you can see what their third grade, their fourth grade, their fifth grade, and then an average, basically, of their total score, and where that sits in comparison to other schools in the county. The next page is, of course, the same for middle school, and the final page for the high school. And then the next chart, this is probably the hardest to read, but probably the most important, because it's trying to compare the same students. In other words, when you look at a third grade test to a third grade test to a third grade test over three years, those are three different cohorts. But if you look at the class of, for example, 2024, you can see that their English Language Arts score, what it was in 2015, what it was in 2016, and what it was in 2017. So in that case, you could see that there was a little bit of rise. And even though it looks like a drop, given the plus or minus, you know, that's probably a flat score, more or less. Some have dropped, some have stayed the same, some have gone up a little. But then you're comparing the same students. Again, the test is different, because the standards are different. But it's not comparing third graders to third graders to third graders over three years. It's comparing the same children. The next chart, very quickly, you know, we then, that looks like another comparison of everybody. I'm going backwards, that's why. I learned to read my pages relatively better. The next one is the ELA results by district. You can see the various schools. Obviously, we only have one middle school, one high school. And so you can see exactly how they did compared to each other, the three elementary schools, with a composite score, and the same for math. And I put in for that year, so you could see, I put both the 17 and 16 data for the state. So you can see that also the state, like I said, had a, had a drop of a little bit as well, not just South Burlington. And finally, FRL is free and reduced lunch. And again, a very important point, if you look, for example, at third grade, you can see that there's no data for free and reduced lunch for Rick Marcott Central School or for Orchard School. And that means that the size of the, the end size was too small, where either it would be identifiable, if you recorded that score, is where you might be able to figure out who were the students on free and reduced lunch. So you can see, though, that we do have free and reduced lunch scores. And one of the things to look at is kind of the gap between those who are not on free and reduced lunch. Well, all students. We don't have the figure here. We could put a figure here for those who are not on free and reduced lunch. So this is all students versus free and reduced lunch, not not on free and reduced lunch versus free and reduced lunch. And then finally, by gender. And, and again, if you can see where there are the same, where genders are doing the same, and where they're, they're not. So just the last bullet point I'd like to make is we're just starting to assess this data. There are sub-tests within the data, which I use for the ends report. And at the moment, we don't have that data, because just after they released this, they made it public, their site in which you get all the information basically is being retooled and repaired and readjusted, because some of these scores are not always on that site. So that hasn't reopened yet, but that gives us the ability to look actually at reading, at writing, at speaking and listening, and research, and on the difference between problem solving and the actual content of math, for example. That's my quick report, and I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Stuart.
Questions from the board?
Bridget. I know you haven't dug too deeply yet, but overall, I mean, what did this tell you about how we're doing as a district?
There are a couple of things. I mean, overall, we're doing, you know, fairly well compared to the state. I'm not sure we're doing as well as we want to do compared to ourselves. One of the things we're looking for particularly, we've had some discussions about math at the high school, where we had gone up for two years, and then we had a little bit of a drop this year. And we know that some of that is scope and sequence, that we're not getting to the thing that is on the test for juniors. Of course, we don't know yet what's going to be on the test for freshmen, which is who will be taking the test this year. We don't even know what that will look like, whether that'll be a full test or just a pilot, because obviously, they have to take like the eighth grade test and the 11th grade test, and, you know, make sure that the questions are both content and age-appropriate. Obviously, both in math and in English Language Arts. But I think overall, it tells us we're doing an okay job, but not a great job. And so we're looking at that, and in order to really, so those sub-tests allow you to see who's one and a half standard deviations above, who's one and a half standard deviations below, and who's in the norm. And so using that data, you know, we begin to look for anomalies, kids, kid by kid to work with, to see, well, you know, because we have actually had kids who are, for example, let's say, above the standard deviation in writing, in listening, in speaking, in research, but actually below the standard deviation in reading. So what is that student doing to compensate? And do we know that that child actually has maybe a reading problem? So those are the kinds of things we do at the individual level. And then we, again, we always look programmatically to make sure that we are aligned as best as we can without teaching to a test, because, you know, we also are teaching to our curriculum what we think is important.
Is there a scheduled followed up, follow-up on, once that data is available?
Sure, I actually plan to put it as part of the academic, I believe it was in the academic report for the ends. And I've talked to David, instead of doing them all four at once, to really spread them out a little bit more, so we can go into more depth.
November 1st, I think, is, November 1st, I think, we have a...
That'll be a perfect day for me, David. I like November 1st.
I think it's the date we have scheduled at November 1st.
So unless that data does not release by then, Elizabeth, November 1st, we would look at that data more specifically. We, we also have done some preliminary data in the middle school, especially looking at, again, cohort data over time in those subtests, and seeing how kids have done, you know, have they stayed basically at the same level in reading, writing, gone up or gone down? And I'm trying to figure out how to do that with, how to do the student identification, just to see, to show the process.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Anything from the public? All right, we good? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, Master Planning and Visioning.
So you have a, a document, I know it was sent out to you, it was sent out today, thanks to Delina, also by your place. And so this is a, a brief summary of master planning and visioning. There's a lot to go through here, too. I mean, I'll quickly just hit on some of the, the points. That said, I'm trying to continue to go back to kind of the four main tenants in which the board was, you know, in which the board and I agreed to move forward. Currently, it's a little bit heavy on the board, but we've got Martin, Steve, and Bridget working with me. John Stewart has been also supporting some, some work, particularly given the workload that's happened for John Obbin. So number one, noise testing at Chamberlain. I'm not going to read this specifically, but we had requested specific information from the Burlington International Airport, specific to breaking down the DNL contours to more specific data. We've, we requested that, we've received it, and we have sent it to ATC, which is a testing group, for them to do some deeper dive on the data, and then allow us, based on that data, to put forth at least a request for proposal for if, in fact, we want to move that forward. The report is quite, is quite extensive, and so their expertise, I think, will be helpful there. And so that's really bullet point one. Again, to the folks that are listening in, what we're trying to do is make sure we're doing our due diligence, and board, correct me if you want to add to this, our due diligence around making sure that our three elementary schools, based on enrollment, based on cost, based on any external concerning issues that might be either good or bad city center, good or bad airport, and that we can then roll up to ensure that our district is appropriately functioning, and/or if not, what are the options in the event that we need to downsize? And there's, and that's option five, which I'll get to in just, in just a minute. Bullet point two was the participation in its noise compatibility program. Part of the ask, or part of the, actually, a request that came from the airport management was whether or not we wanted to be part of the, this NCP Technical Advisory Committee. So Steve will be going to that. He and I will, actually, I'm going to go to the first two, and we'll be making sure that there's coverage on behalf of the district at these meetings. That was discussed at, at our last, um, um, sub-planning group. Number three, the top two RFPs were submitted for archi, by architecture, for architecture review. And this was specific to get information, this is, was in the budget, specific to the high school and the middle stu, middle school electrical, structural, and mechanical functional nature. And so in, in your board packet tonight is a request, and again, this may, we may not be totally ready, but we were wanting to be able to recommend that to move forward. And again, we may need to pause on that, because I haven't, haven't really connected back in with, with Bridget or Steve. And, and again, you folks can speak to that when we get there. Number four is in the enrollment demographics. Again, we used McGibben, Jerry McGibben, to provide us with an update on the enrollment data. This is, again, a demographer who looks at all of the various factors affecting your city on student enrollment. The enrollment is due to the state, actually, our census data goes into the state, October 1, that's gone in. We have to wait, though, until we get those numbers back, and that, I think, will be towards the end of October, early November, before we get that back. That will also factor into that, where are we with enrollment projections for our schools based on the locations in which currently sent to those, those locations.
Just to interrupt for one second. John and I do have a meeting scheduled for a week from today to sit down, so he can sort of download, yeah, on four, on enrollment and demographics, so that he can kind of download some of the work that he did with you over the summer a little bit. so that he can kind of download some of the work that he did with you over the summer a little bit. And we can start to, because my understanding is what you were hoping for from me in a supporting role would be to give any final feedback in terms of how the study was done to McGibben so that then, when they have the numbers back from the state, we can make sure that the final, final report is as accurate as we think it can be. So John and I are going to work on that next week and hopefully that fits in that deadline of sort of late October.
Thanks for stating that, Bridget. And again, a little back history on the demographic data. Last time we did master planning, we used the data, we used them. It was the first time out of the gate that we used them. And I think when we got the data back, there was some questions that we said, "Well, that, how could that be? Why are they doing this?" And I think our due diligence ahead of time was to ask a lot of those questions out of the gate. So we believe there's some, we hope there'll be some, at least in the preliminary, we've got clarity. But as Bridget earlier said, she and John will also sit down to kind of take that another step on our behalf. And then option five, number five, on the options, have kind of identified these. This is in no way only, but again, I think to the board and to the community, these are some of the things that could be considered as options in the event that you needed to do an immediate kind of closure because of some of the information that's coming back. And obviously, that could be anything from new construction of a new school, new construction in the, as resulting in additions, modular classrooms, leased space, et cetera. So those are the things that we're working through. And it's, again, our hope that this also does need to meld in with the budget process on informing the future at whatever state it is in. So that's an update on, that's a lot. And maybe not a short enough period, but it's a lot of information on the MPV.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have a good question. Could you clarify what modular or...
Great, good question. So oftentimes, when kind of immediate spaces are needed, these are trailers. If you've ever been to the Shelburne Community School, actually, they put those in several years ago, and they still remain there. They're functional classrooms. But they're essentially a modular unit that does get fully, you know, roofed and all of the things, but it is, it is a, it's more of a temporary classroom to help with kind of ebb and flow sometimes of enrollment. Yep, great.
Any other questions or comments from the public?
I just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Jen, you have it.
Clarification on the, trying to put it all together what I think I'm hearing from this, which is that there's a piece about noise evaluation, but there's also a piece about structural and mechanical evaluations, and all of those things are part of number five? That, is that, when you're saying like the school downsized or closure, is that specifically for a particular school? Or are you looking at all the schools across the district when you say that?
That's a great, that's a great question. They are all connected, although there are specific issues that are fundamentally affecting the three elementary schools. And in this case, noise at Chamberlain. Some of the build-out in city center here at Rick Marcot. So it is connected because we do want to get information specific to the high school and the middle school. In other words, if we wanted to add space on to the middle school or the high school before we can just say, in the master, oh yeah, let's just do that. But we have no real specific knowledge on the structural, whether we can go up one floor or two floors or whether the systems can handle it. So it's an important deeper dive before we go too far down the want stage to identify some of the important component stage. So that's, it does all connect, although they may not necessarily all affect, you know, may not affect, our high school might not affect the elementary kind of enrollment distribution. However, it is still needed.
David, can I just add one thing? So just to take one step back, back in December of last year, so almost a year ago, we had these four different resolutions after that last master planning and bit of, not bit of work, a lot of work, like that last burst of work. And this is, there's no sort of plan on the books to assess whether we're closing a school or not other than Chamberlain, one of the four resolutions we had was we really needed to get a baseline at Chamberlain to understand whether we're serving those students appropriately now from a health and academic perspective, given the noise that's there now. And then if we are, which I think we're kind of going into it with the assumption that we are, but we're going to do the work to find out. And then how will the F-35 likely affect that? And then to have in place a contingency plan, meaning only if it's necessary, you know, and we find out that we're not serving those students appropriately, a short-term contingency plan to what we're going to do with them and how quickly we can do that, and all the steps that would need to be in place if we needed to do that quickly. And then there's a lot of longer-term background work. And that's what David's talking about with regard to the high school and the middle school. One of the things that was in the resolutions was that in terms of what we're really probably going to do next would be upgrades at the high school and middle school. And it became clear as we went through that last master planning and visioning burst, we sort of talked about this broadly, but no one had really sort of put a fine point on what the priorities were at the high school and middle school for upgrades, as David was saying, what is possible at those buildings. And that, and then again, it ties back to the elementary schools. Do we want to leave open the possibility that someday down the road we could potentially move fifth grade there if we had to in one of these contingency scenarios? So there's no plan right now to sort of say we're moving toward that. It's just, we've taken a step back and we're sort of doing broader, longer-term planning for the district as a whole. And I think our fourth resolution was really a SWOT analysis of all the potential things that could be coming down the road, just so we're taking a more structured approach as opposed to just reacting to, you know, a specific proposal we might get on one of those schools or reacting to, we're trying to move out of that reactionary mode into a longer-term planning mode. So that's, that's what all this stuff is about, really.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 9, Update on Negotiations. And I guess a quick recap is at about 2:30 this morning, after many hours of mediation, the South Burlington Educators Association and the School Board of South Burlington reached a tentative agreement on a two-year settlement contract. My understanding is this afternoon at about 4:30, the South Burlington Educators Association ratified that agreement. And we have, we will be warning, we just got a date and time here. The School Board will be warning a special meeting for this Friday at October 6, on October 6 at 8:30 a.m. at the Tuttle Middle School for the board to review the terms of the agreement and to also ratify the two-year settlement that's in place right now. And until that time, specific terms will not be released, but can be at that time.
We probably should just clarify for people who might not have been following us closely, when we say a two-year agreement, we mean FY 2018 and 2019. So there was a little bit of miscommunication in some of the public stuff that I had seen, that we were working on a contract for FY 19 and FY 20, but this is 18 and 19.
And specifically, the dates are July 1 of 2017 going through June 30 of 2019. Any other board comments at this point in time? Any comments or questions from the public? Yes, Anne.
You guys don't look nearly as tired as you should. I just wanted to come here first and thank you guys for your service. I know that the time you guys spent in the two marathon negotiations was just the smallest fraction of the amount of time that you put in over several months to make this settlement possible. So I wish Martin here would tell them the same thing. Anyway, thank you very much. I really, it's so nice to be in this room talking about test scores and master planning rather than in the gym with 150 people.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thanks. Anything else?
Great.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 10, Set the Agenda for October 18.
So one addition in here that I just want to talk to the board about. And this is, this is a big topic around policy, kind of policy updating. This is, again, my responsibility I need to have with you in updating. And I'm not feeling, I'm feeling fine, but we need to be working, we need to be putting some regular attention to policy updates. So again, administratively, we've worked on this. And my plan is to begin every meeting, or to have at every meeting kind of warning at least three. And then as we get going, be able to move those from warning. Again, if they're, if they're ready to move on with feedback, we move them on to second reading and then approval. But to kind of get in a pipeline of updating. And we have categories where we have required policies, and then we also have those that we want to also make sure are there. Because we're a policy governance district, it's a little bit different. But most of what we have, I think, is good, but it's in need of updating. And so that's the plan. And I think when we begin to populate that, you'll start to see that there's at least, there's an end in sight pretty quickly. We'll be able to show you that. I think also that will bring up good conversations specific to how we do things or how we should be doing things, et cetera. So that's an addition to the, to the, to the October 18 agenda. And I don't know where we'll quite put that, probably somewhere between eight and nine or nine and 10. And I'll work with Delina on that one.
So this will be a series of policy updates on a routine basis, and we'll see, you mentioned two to three at a time.
That's right. And again, depending on the size of some of them, if they're huge, then I won't put, I won't put three probably, we'll use good judgment because, and also should be calibrated to budget and some of those other things so when we have busy schedules. But the general idea here is to just try to really get after that. And again, I, most of this has fallen on, and Delina has done a great job, but it's like, we have a lot going on. And so I just, I wanted to get this back on the agenda and wrap.
Anything else for the October 18 meeting?
I think we need to add budget on, yeah? Because that's, we've got our timelines. We should probably just put on a standing budget item until we're through March.
Got to match it up with it, yeah. Thank you.
I just quickly noticed that this due representative report wasn't explicitly included in the announcements. We have to sue the guys.
Yep, that's good. We're checking, just making sure you're paying attention.
And actually, if we could be a little more specific on that one, if we could get an update on the application process, that would be perfect.
That's great.
Great, thank you.
All right. Move on to Agenda Item Level 11, Future Agenda Items. Might be my imagination, but this list looks like it's getting shorter to me.
It does.
Well, until you see it on, you know, coming up, the state and education policies, you know, I think maybe when you feel that that's going or if you want to cross it off, we're going to start to add it. So I don't know that it needs to be in both places, but that could, that could be one that comes off.
Hold it for now.
Would the application process be included as an agenda item that we discussed on the floor or would that just be set up?
Probably more of an update under your report.
Gotcha.
That's perfect. All right, any, if, unless there's anything else on future agenda items, we'll move to Agenda Item 12, Consider the Minutes of the Meetings of, oh, we got a few here. September 11, 13, 18, and 28. So we will start with the 11. This was a working subcommittee meeting. Seeing no comments, those will be by consensus approved. The meeting of September 13. Seeing no comments, those are approved. Meeting of September 13, it's a regular meeting. All right, seeing no comments, those are approved. And September 18. This was also a working session. Seeing no comments, those are approved. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 13, the Consent Agenda.
So if I could, Elizabeth, just, we've got, we've got two items. We've got the new hire that I mentioned, that's also in your new hire pack. But, and that is Catherine Wood, fourth grade teacher, Orchard. However, I would be remiss not to make mention of information specific to our high school. We have Nancy LeVarneway. I don't even want to guess how long she's been an employee of ours. She's the head of the Career Development Center, and she has announced her retirement. Those of you who have been around our district for a long time, we've had a multitude of things going on with student internships, businesses that have worked collaboratively with us. Just, there's an exorbitant amount of things that she has done for the district. And we will be sad to see her go. She's done an excellent job for us. And again, I would be remiss not to just note her contributions to the district.
If you would, David, would you please pass on on behalf of the board our thanks and our gratitude for her service?
Absolutely.
She's been a great asset. Do we want to talk about the bid specifically here?
Yep. So this is the bid for the Mechanical, Structural, and Electrical for the high school and the middle school. And the recommendation that the administration put forward was for Doran Whittier to do that work. Again, they then do, you know, subcontract, obviously, to do the necessary work. But that's, that is the recommendation. And I, again, if Bridget and Steve are not feeling that you've had enough opportunity to do that, then I would, then we certainly could move it to the next. I would like to try to move on this because it's, time is of the essence. But I want to be fair to both Steve and Bridget, and I'm not sure, and I haven't been necessarily with you all the time to know about whether you've had a chance. So it's really up to you folks on this.
I am not feeling ready. Frankly, I have not dug into this as deeply as I would have liked because I've been focused on other things. So I hate to delay it, but could we, yeah?
Put it on the, we'll put it on the 18.
That would be fine.
Does that, does that work?
Is that okay with you, Steve?
And any, any specific questions that you might have? I think, you know, you can come back to John Obin and John and Bart and team can help out with answering any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 14, AP Orders 10 and 11. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, those are approved. Moving on to Agenda Item 15, AP Order Check to Optive, is that correct? Security and the amount of $53,446.99.
These are our security cameras, I believe, is that?
No, it's the networking equipment that goes throughout a lot of the buildings. It's being replaced and upgraded. It was put out to bid according to federal standards for funding under the E-Rate program. So it'll eventually get reimbursed by the E-Rate folks. So this is part of the infrastructure for IT equipment.
Any questions on this? Do I have a motion to approve the AP Order to Optive Security and the amount listed? Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
And given the brief hours of sleep the board has had, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. I have a few needs for signatures here.
Okay.